First of all, to my immediate left here is Mayor Tom Koontz, who is running unopposed. So he can basically say anything he wants today. Then in Ward Two, we have incumbent Greg Schultz and challenger Tony Boyd. Ward Four, also running unopposed, is incumbent Kevin Rainey. And at-large candidates, incumbent Les Abraham and challenger Doug Boss. A third candidate for the at-large position is unable to be with us today, Hamid Torahpour. So, let's get on to the rules of our forum today. No candidate has been provided the questions in advance. Candidates will respond to each question in alternate responses. We will endeavor to keep the answers together so that, for example, candidates for the at-large position or for the Ward Two position will be able to answer back-to-back. I'll do my best, it's a little complicated today, but I'll do my best. Candidates will be allowed two minutes for an opening statement, and then one minute for each question, and then two minutes for a closing statement. Sharon West is once again our timekeeper, and Sharon will show you a yellow card indicating that you have thirty seconds left for your answer. She will show you a red card indicating that your time is up. And if you go over that time limit, I will stop you. Believe me. We will accept questions from the audience and we'll work them in as time allows. Rhonda, Crystal, and Matt will be collecting the questions, so once you have them written down, if you just kind of want to signal to them, they will see you, and they'll collect your questions and get them up here to us. The questions from the audience should be directed not to a specific candidate, but to all of the candidates as a whole. And finally, we would ask the audience to hold all applause or any other reaction until the forum is completed. One last announcement. AM 1390 K R F O will be rebroadcasting this forum on Wednesday night at 5:15. And Oatana Live will be recording this as well, it's recording this as well, and they will have it up on their website, and you can go to the Chamber's website for a link for that. And of course, the Oatana People's Press will be having this not only as a story in tomorrow's paper, but we're broadcasting it live and we'll have a video of it. So let us begin with the opening statements from the candidates. Mayor Koontz, we will begin with you. At the bottom. No, let's try that one. Any idea?
I think that's just an indication that the mayor is supposed to be silent for this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tom Koontz, Mayor of the great city of Oatana, lifelong resident of Oatana, graduated in sixty-three, ten-eight years in the United States Air Force, came back, went to work for the Oatana Public Utilities. Started out as a meter reader and ended up as a general manager, retired in 'oh three, same year I retired and became Mayor of the great city of Oatana. And the reason that I enjoy being the Mayor of the great city of Oatana, and I'll run for one more term, is that it's a great city, and I love this city. We have seen significant growth in both commercial and industrial, and I hope to keep that going for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Schultz, and I'm running to represent the second ward. I was appointed in 2011, elected in 2012, and currently serve as a Vice President. My bio's on the table, I think somewhere he can read about that, I won't go into that. But as the owner of two businesses in Oatana, namely Schultz Homes, a construction company and land development company, and of course, the Oatana Landmark Astas Candy Shop, I originally sought the election to give a business owner's perspective to the council. We were in the midst of the Great Recession, and everyone was suffering to some extent. I am proud we kept the lid on spending while dealing with the aftermath of flooding issues and a stagnant economy. Today, we are a much leaner, today we have a much leaner local government, and the city is in excellent financial condition, giving us a good foundation to work from. But today, I come here to talk about the future. I'm running for reelection, not because of our foundation, but what we can build on it. Economic development is crucial to our continued success. We have to be ready to compete with other cities to attract new businesses and retain the ones we have. We cannot give up on our central business district. It is crucial we develop a plan to revitalize the downtown area, and continue to keep Oatana financially healthy and invest in our infrastructure and quality of life. My investment of time, effort, and resources in Oatana make me uniquely qualified to tackle the issues and help make Oatana a better place to live and work, and grow with an entrepreneurial spirit. We are so proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Boyd.
Hello, my name is Tony Boyd. I'm not an Oatana native. I grew up in Burville, Minnesota. Met my now-wife, who is an Oatana native, and back in St. Olaf. We've been together for thirteen years. During that time, earned my degree from St. Olaf with a major in political science and German. Went on to serve in the U.S. Army as a Second Lieutenant through the National Guard. Enlisted two months before nine eleven happened. Had a strong commitment to my community and the towns that I grew up in. I was an Eagle Scout growing up as well. After leaving the military, went on to work on my MBA at Hamlin, where I received that degree with concentration in finance. Proceeded then to work at EcoLab, so I have familiarity with Fortune 500 companies, understanding how big business operations work. Soon after, we were married, Ellie and I, and we had our little daughter Clara, who's hanging out in the back. I told her I'd give her a shout-out. So we have Clara, who's five, and Gavin, who's one. We moved to Oatana just over four years ago, determined that this is the place that we wanted to make our home. I've had a strong familiarity with the community over the thirteen-plus years that I've done with Emily, and really come to love this community even before living here. Since that time, my wife and I, we've opened up a small business, actually in Northfield. We did pursue the opportunity here in Oatana and hoped to at some point, but we run a small dance studio in Northfield. So, a combination of my business experience, past academic accomplishments, and services to the community, I feel will serve me in representing this community to be an impartial advocate, responsive provider to this community, focusing on rebuilding our downtown and bringing the heart to the city, opening our community and sharing our talents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey.
Good afternoon. First of all, before I get started, I need to embarrass one of our Rotarians. Aaron Stephenson is eighteen years old today. Happy birthday, Aaron. First and thank yous, thank you to the Oatana People's Press, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary for putting this on. I think it's important that the citizens of Oatana get to hear what the candidates stand for, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank my wife Monica, my son Jake and his wife Sammy, and my daughter Michaela for supporting me in running four years ago and encouraging me to once again run this year. They are my backbone and very much appreciated. The city of Oatana, twenty-six thousand people, there are many different needs and expectations. Our goal is to try to meet the needs of all cities whenever possible. I think we do a good job of that. Part of what we do is we work as a team to continue to make Oatana strong, vibrant, safe, and a community with a good retail options along with leisure time activities. We have a high-quality administrator. Our department staff is as strong as any staff that you could get. Our department heads, they care about Oatana. They put in countless hours to make Oatana better for all of us. I appreciate all of our city employees. Once again, they go far beyond expectation to make this city a great city in which to live in, to work, and to relax and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham.
Now you're talking to the old guy of the bunch. I have been on the City Council for twenty years. My twenty-first year now, and the things that have been said here about what we do for the city, I can relate to that too. You do have my bio in here, so you, and I think everybody knows who I am. They've dealt with me on different occasions for different things over the years, and I try to be fair with everybody if possible. One of the things that, when I was elected in 1995, I set a goal that if I wanted to do a job, I'd do a job. As a result, over the twenty-one years, I have missed five meetings of the City Council. So, that does not include all the other meetings that the City Council members have handled over the years. Some days it's one a day, sometimes it's maybe one every other week. But it is a continuous effort to run the city the way it should be done. And I tell people that my job is not to run the city, but to plan for the future of the city. We have staff administrator that does the job of running the city, and we do expect a good job, and they do a good job. But with that being said, I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank the newspaper, the Rotary, and the Chamber for allowing us to speak at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boss.
Well, thanks, everybody, for letting me talk here today. I have a few reasons why I'm running. Number one, obviously, Oatana is a great town. Through all the years of coaching and all the different things that I was able to do in the last bunch of years, we went to every town in southern Minnesota, maybe every town in Minnesota, and there's nothing like this town out there. You look around this crowd, you see amazing people that do great work and make things happen. So, growing up here, I did grow up here, went to Oatana High School, graduated from Bethel University in 1987. But man, what a great place to grow up, all the sports, we had great coaches, great schools. Tom, thanks. Great teachers all the way along, and so this is an outstanding place to grow up. It's also been a great place for me to raise my family. I have three children, my beautiful wife Tammy and my mom are in back, so, but what a great place to raise kids. I still have my daughter that's a junior this year, and so we're still going through that a little bit, but it's a super town. And it's also, for me, been a great town to be in business. I purchased my business in 1988, so that dates me a little bit, and now I've been in it twenty-eight years. And, you know, it's never easy in small business, it's a battle every day, and you just figure out how to keep going and stay in business. So it's been a great town, I've got a lot of friends and people that have helped out a lot. My second reason is public service. It's an honorable thing, and I think I've been interested in it for a long, long time. Numerous years ago, Jerry Peterson asked me to be on the county board, mostly remember Jerry, he was a good man. And so I was able to spend eight years on the park board, working with Steve Schroed, and had some really nice accomplishments. In fact, if you've been up there lately, the new bleachers are fantastic. Thanks to Corky for helping me.
Thank you, Mr. Boss. Thank you. I have been asked to read the bio of Hamid Torahpour. It arrived here later than was expected to be able to get into the publication, but here is his bio. "Hamid Torahpour is an author, writer, and producer, born and raised in southern Minnesota. A successful entrepreneur and feature film producer, his most recent film Zombies has been picked up for a theatrical release and international distribution. Hamid, along with his wife, own the Color-5K, which has helped charities all over the globe raise over three million dollars. Hamid and Camille have a generous heart, they consistently put fifty percent of their profit back into the causes that do the most good. Hamid is looking to make a splash in the City Council by providing a different perspective and outside-the-box thinking. Just because things have been done a certain way for a long time doesn't mean that they should continue to be done that way." Now, gentlemen, we are going to the first question, then. You will have one minute for each answer. And so, Mr. Schultz, we will begin with you.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
There you go. All right. "What is your vision for Oatana, and how will you work to achieve it?" Mr. Schultz.
Well, my vision for Oatana is to make it the greatest and best place we can all live in. My family's been here for generations and invested heavily in the community, and I hope to stay, or my family will be here for generations more. First off, we gotta really do some revitalization of the downtown area. I think it's very important, that's the core, central business district of our community. There's lots of ways to go about it. We've started the Main Street program, we've started a couple other programs, but as a downtown business owner and property owner, I really think that's a, it's gonna be a hard thing to do, but we have to work together, the business people, the property owners, and the city, to make it more vibrant downtown. I think that's one of my main goals. And also, of course, the budget is always one of the most important things that the City Council works on, and we gotta keep our city good and financially stable so that we can continue to do the thing we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Boyd.
The vision that I'm sharing for our community echoes some of what Mr. Schultz has spoken about here, in revitalizing our downtown community, but I want to speak with you a little bit about the understanding as to why. Our community has invested heavily in supporting larger businesses to the betterment of our town, but as we continue to support large business, we're quickly noticing how, I don't wanna say fickle, but how decisions that are beyond our control at the community level can impact our overall well-being. Through the loss of some businesses that are occurring, through no fault of this community, we're gonna be without certain apparatuses and opportunities. And so that's where the vision and the statement of revitalizing the heart of the downtown, it's not specific to one central area, it's an overall theme that I'm trying to communicate through, that we need to make sure that we have a vibrant heart and that we're successful at all levels of business.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey.
The vision for Oatana, as we move forward, the community will continue to grow. I think it's extremely important that we keep it as safe and as clean as we have it today, if not better. While, yes, I agree that a downtown district being strong is vitally important, I would also push for making sure that the other six retail areas within the community are not ignored. I've got two areas down in southern Minnesota that I represent that, in my opinion, are equally as important. To achieve these goals, we have to really make sure that our infrastructure is in place. We can't have strong economic development if we don't have good wastewater, if we don't have good roads, if we don't have good schools. It's gonna take an all-encompassing effort in which to make sure that, while our vision is great, achieving it is attainable.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Mr. Abraham.
Over the years that we have been, or that I've been on the council, we have seen significant growth in Oatana. We've grown from less than twenty thousand population in 1995 to twenty-six thousand in less than ten years, fifteen years. But the growth has come sometimes at a cost. As Kevin mentioned, we don't have just the downtown to deal with, we have the entire city. We're looking at growth both north, south, east, and west, and we have to look at that. Without a good infrastructure to do that, we're not going to go anywhere. So, again, my plan is to continue growing as we have. We always look at other ways to do things better, but we still want to continue growing.
Thank you. Mr. Boss.
Well, I think overall, I'd like to thank these guys for doing such a good job the last bunch of years. We're in a good position and we have a great town. Couple of things for me, as obviously, I think we need to have a long-term vision for the downtown area. It's easy to try to get somebody here or somebody there, but what's this gonna look like in ten years? And where can we develop things so that it makes good sense and brings even more? And within that whole thing, my idea of economic development is looking out for the small guy. We're fortunate to have some great big major businesses, and that's great, but the small people that risk their everyday life to spend all their money to open a business, they need support, and they need a friend to help them with that. So, that's important to me.
Thank you. Mr. Koontz.
You know, when I graduated in sixty-three, we were about thirteen thousand. Today, we're about twenty-six thousand.
I'll take your microphones off. There you go.
When I graduated in sixty-three, we were about thirteen thousand. Today, we're twenty-six thousand. I would like to see us continue that growth. We've been very, very fortunate in industrial growth, we're an industrial community, we've been very, very fortunate with our commercial growth. But the biggest challenge that we're gonna see as we go forward is manpower, and obtaining the right manpower to help facilitate our workforce. So, the downtown area, manufacturing, workforce, is all very, very important.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey, we're gonna begin the next question with you, if we may, and this is a follow-up on something that most of you touched on. This past week, I received an email from a concerned citizen who lives in downtown Oatana, asking about ideas to improve the appearance and the safety of the downtown area. It echoed the question we are going to ask you about your vision for downtown Oatana. Specifically, we want to know this. Downtown Oatana has several empty storefronts and aging properties. What is your specific plan to revitalize our historic central downtown? Mr. Rainey.
Well, first of all, the, most of the storefronts that are empty in downtown Oatana, the city doesn't own them. Other than the Bubba's location, the city does not own them. And so the current owner, they may not even live in our state. So to convince them that they should spend money to attempt to get a business in those locations, there's, really, there's only so much that the city can do. We can't force people to move into these storefronts. I think that with Troy Collector and our economic development team, if they can convince them to look at Oatana again and try to put a business in there. Right now, I don't see a lot of, a lot of these owners attempting to do anything. Some of them, unfortunately for Oatana, are using these storefronts as a business loss, and to change that attitude is going to be a challenge.
Thank you. Mr. Boss, we'll move to you next.
Well, it's a tough situation with some of those buildings down there, 'cause if you're a businessperson, one of the things you wanna do is make money, and you're not gonna put all your money in something with no payback. So to own an old building, it may cost you five, six hundred thousand dollars to put in elevators and sprinklers and everything, it's gonna be a problem. I do think there's gonna be times where some of those buildings have to go. You might have to start from scratch and build some new buildings, but, you know, it's gotta be economically feasible for the owner and utilities, there's not much that's gonna happen there.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham.
One of the things that we have already done, is we've just completed a thirty-six-unit apartment complex on Rose Street. We have been purchasing other pieces of property along the, around the downtown area to do some more building of apartment complexes. The idea to do that is to get the people to live downtown, and once that happens, after hours, they're gonna be walking around and visiting the businesses downtown. And hopefully, people will see that and start looking at moving their business downtown. It's a roundabout way to do it, but sometimes it's very effective.
Thank you. Mr. Koontz.
Most of the improvements that have been taking place in the downtown area come from government financing. The city has partnered up with grants and other things. If you look at Completely Kids, that was done because they got a grant. If you look at what's going on at the Pool Hall today, that's done because it's got a grant. If you look at Custom Coffee, what's going on with that one, that's got a grant. So there has been a lot of improvements that have taken place downtown, and the city has been involved in that. We will continue to reach out to the storefronts and to the owners downtown and do everything we can to improve their business.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
The development of the downtown community, and the question really kind of struck the chord with me, and it's about maintaining the history of the area that we have, understanding where we've come as a community, and I've read up quite a bit on the history of Oatana and the downtown core and the essence of what it is, and I'm very happy for some of the items that have been preserved, but I think that there's continued opportunity to continue to preserve those. In terms of the business viability of opportunities there, I support what Mayor Koontz is saying about the grants. It needs to be a joint venture. We have to be able to constructively develop a town that encourages that. Councilman Abrams has spoken to activities that have taken place to help to put people there. That's great. What are we doing to continue to support, to bring businesses there, or are we encouraging them to go to other areas? And not to discredit what Councilman Rainey has said as well about supporting the other industries.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Two quick things. The main thing is some sort of tax incentive to the building owners. It's kind of a catch-22 situation in downtown Oatana. You own a building, you wanna put improvements in it, you have to compete with other building owners for tenants, so that the rents stay at kind of a stable level, no matter what you put into your building. And it's really difficult, because you fix your building up, and what's the first thing that happens? Your property taxes go up. So that's one issue I think we can, we can work with on taxes. Another one is safety and appearance of downtown. There's a study done at the high school, and one of the main reasons kids didn't come downtown is because they were scared. That one really shocked me. We have to work with Main Street to get the building owners and the storefront owners to, or businesses, to do things to make downtown look more appealing and safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham, we will begin the next question with you. "After keeping tax increases low throughout the recession and afterward, what should the city's budgeting priorities be now? Or to put it another way, what is your stance on the tax levy that is currently in the works? Is it a good plan? Should the tax levy be less? Should it be more? And please explain your answer."
We have kept it very low for, since about 2004, 2005, because of the recession. We're trying to catch up right now, because there's a lot of things that we're not done. Do I support the increase? Yes. We have a six percent, what we would like to look at is possibly a five percent if we can get to that point. But it's still a necessary increase because we've kept it so low. We've also just done a couple of worst studies on all the jobs in Oatana. Complaint was is because of the low salaries. Police officers, it's been like a revolving door through there to keep them there. We need to get better prices or salaries for these to keep them. So, that's because of the increase at this point, 'cause seventy-four percent of our budget is employee salaries and benefits.
Thank you. Mr. Boss.
Well, I would have to say in the budget area, I'm certainly a conservative, but I'm not, you have to spend money on certain things. It's obviously gotta keep the city going and pay people and do all those things, so as far as the current budget, I will have to pass. I can't tell you anything about that.
All right. Mr. Koontz.
You know, we have, we have definitely kept the levy in check over the last six to seven years. If you look at it, it's been one, one-and-a-half percent levy increase. This year, they're looking at six, trying to get it down to five. When you got seventy-five percent of your budget goes towards manpower and staff, it's only twenty-five percent that leaves you to get everything else done. In order to build a great community, you need a great infrastructure, and in order to have that great infrastructure, you need to have the funds available to do that. So, I support the five percent, six percent tax levy increase.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Yes, I have to agree. I know that I'm happy with the six percent increase, I'd like to see it work down a little bit, but this past year, we went through the comparative worst study, and that compromises about a little over, about three-and-a-half percent of that increase is for wages. We have to keep, you have to keep in mind that what the city offers, offers is mostly services, and that's personnel, that's people, and we have to pay those people. If we wanna keep good quality people, we have to pay them. I wanna really talk about the law enforcement. Like what law enforcement's going through across the country, it's very hard to get competitive, good policemen, and we have to pay them to keep them here. So that's a really important part, and I guess I'm in favor of what's going on, so...
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
The levy that's being proposed and considered is not something that I can specifically speak for or against. What I will speak to is the long-term planning that led us to this point. I understand some of the decisions that were made in the past in terms of helping to control costs, but in addition, it's about a long-term vision of our community, and maintaining that for not just addressing the needs of today, but the needs of tomorrow and the uncertainty. that for not just addressing the needs of today, but the needs of tomorrow and the uncertainty that that presents. Understanding that the, the majority of that is going to be dedicated towards employees and retaining high-value talent, I support that. That's, that's an endeavor that's a core tenet of my campaign, is maintaining the talent that we have in this community. But I think that there can be more constructive ways to accomplish that while still supporting our infrastructure and keeping our tax levy in check.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey?
Yeah, in, in 2016, our budget for the city was $17,892,060. In 2017, it is proposed at $18,674,983. That is roughly a 4.4% increase. I support dropping it down to 5% rather than the 6%. 3.9% right now of the 4.4 increase is personnel costs, wage, health insurance, workers' comp, benefits. 0.2% is for safety gear for the fire department. It's, it's very much needed, and, and we had to get that in the budget. 0.3% is for Brooktree to put them on the VRF fund. It's something that the, most of the city is on right now, the VRF, Vehicle Replacement Fund. It's a better way, in my opinion, of purchasing very expensive equipment rather than one-time capital improvement costs. And so...
Thank you, Mr. Rainey.
That's a quick minute.
You're beginning to, never mind. The next question comes from the audience, and we're going to try to meld it in with a question that we had for you. This is the question. One challenge with the shortage of workers in the area for open jobs is a shortage of housing. Another is transportation. What can be done to address these barriers for employees, especially in Oatana? And along with that, we would say expansions in Cybex, Byricon, and other properties will bring more jobs to Oatana. What can and should the city do to ensure there is enough affordable housing available for workers and their families? Mr. Coates, I'm going to ask you to go first.
As was mentioned in the past, we just opened a 36-unit workforce housing complex, which provides units for the workforce housing. In the past, we have seen our housing starts at about three, or four, or five, or six a year. This year, as we speak already, we're over 30 starts. So we can see that the recession has somewhat ended, and the housing starts are moving forward. We also have somebody that is interested in building another apartment complex over by the theater. That will help continue to have housing available for our workforce. I think that, you know, the challenge is that we need the workers, we need them to come into Oatana, but we also need to find those houses that are under $200,000 so they can start with.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
In terms of affordable housing, I think that often comes back to an appropriate salary or wage, should we be able to afford that now? If the issue is a shortage of available housing that corresponds to a suitable living wage, then a lot of the directives and actions that have been taken by the council, I'm in support of. We need to make sure that we have adequate housing and support the building that's occurring in our community. I'm sure Mr. Schultz will be able to speak a little bit more about the, the building nature of it all, but we have to make sure that everything is affordable, but also that we're maintaining the overall infrastructure to enable people, or really to create the desire for people to purchase the houses that are available and may be affordable, and to support in our community, helping out one another to support that growth and maintenance and, and well-being and upkeep of the houses. Certainly something that I looked at as I was moving into the community is where am I going to move to? What is it that I want to develop and create?
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Schultz?
Well, the key word in that question is affordable. Nobody's ever been able to explain affordable to me. Affordable is different for different people. But yes, we have to continue to work with workforce housing. That's an incentive from the government to bring more apartments in, like have just been built downtown. Wages probably have to increase some, and we have a limited supply of existing housing, which we'll see the price come up on that. As the price comes, comes up on that, that will bring new, more new construction in. Transportation, I think we have to accept the fact that not everybody that's going to work here is going to live in Oatana. So we maybe have to look at some sort of regional types of transportation to get the workforce to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey?
Well, I, like everyone said, the workforce housing that, the apartment complex that is now open in downtown Oatana, the second, I think that as we purchase the properties on Pearl Street, I think that it's going to happen quicker than, than we anticipate in regards to putting another apartment complex in there. I, I really like the construction management people that are reinvesting in properties in Oatana. If you look at the Purple House, the former Purple House across from St. Joe's, and you look at it now, wow, what a difference. And as soon as that was done, it sold in about five days. So I encourage construction people to continue to look for those opportunities. Transportation, I know that Byricon and some other industrial companies are already having buses go down to Austin, Ellewood, to bring the employees up here. That is, having quality employees within our city is important.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Mr. Boss?
Well, I guess my answer to that is that my current representative here is Mr. Schultz. So what he said goes for me.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
Same for me. We have, again, we're, we're looking at it, the workforce housing that will be built, we're planning on more. We're going to continue looking at what we can do. Bringing everybody into the Oatana, trying to make Oatana as attractive as possible to get the people to come here, finding good employees. The contractors that were building homes a number of years ago that are no longer building homes, those people are doing other jobs because they didn't have the homes to build. Again, we need to get some of those people back here that are willing to build what we would call affordable housing, and we can start getting back into that business.
Thank you. The next question, we'll begin with Mr. Schultz. The law enforcement center shared by the Oatana Police Department and the Steel County Sheriff's Office has some space issues, we are told. What should the future options for the LEC look like? Should there be coordination with the county? Mr. Schultz?
Well, yes, we should always have coordination, but I think you brought, part of that question is, there isn't going to be a space issue. The 911 center located in the second floor, with some decisions are going to have to be made in the next few years, whether they can stay together or not. I, I think the likelihood of them staying together might be limited. They might be better off being separated, and just because of the space, it might be more and more economically feasible to be in a different, different locations. But of course, we always want to collaborate the best we can. If it's at all possible to keep them together, I think that's probably for the best interest of the community. I just don't know that it's possible.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
I think I have probably pretty similar sentiments on this. In terms of coordination is always key. Communication helps to identify what obstacles and objectives are out there to overcome. In terms of keeping units together, businesses can function separately, but they typically will be more successful by being able to keep them together. So I think it's something that's still going to be, to be determined, but continuing to look into the possibility of, of either any potential expansion is a desirable solution that can keep them together.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey?
Well, first of all, I think we're at least 10 years off, if not 15, so we've got some time to really look at this. And how, how the future will look, I don't know. As, as Greg Schultz said, the 911 center, that's, right now, it, it fits where it's at, but as community and the county continue to grow, they're going to need more room as well. The city and the county get along very well together. However, as, as each entity continues to grow and makes that space tighter, and everyone wants, that wants their space. I look forward to, in the future, working with, with the county and designing something that works both for the county and the city.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
This is an issue that I've been involved with from the very beginning, when I got on the city council. We had purchased the building before I got on, and we were starting to remodel it. The idea was is that there was going to be plenty of space available. Right now, about two years ago, three years ago, we did a remodel of it with a plan for 10 years. We've got seven years left. It's important that we look at how the two part entities can work together and make it happen, because it means that one of them will have to move. I don't see the likelihood of us expanding in that area. So what, something is going to happen, and this is what we have been discussing for a long period of time, and probably will continue for a period before we have to start acting on it.
Thank you. Mr. Boss?
Well, of course, I think it's really important for the city and the county to coordinate together, because, you know, you don't want to be paying double for anything in all those issues. For me, if I were elected, the first thing I would do is contact the mayor and the chief and get a tour of the facilities, get a feel for what they're looking at, and, you know, educate myself on the whole issue and see if I can pitch in on that.
Thank you. Mr. Coates?
As has been said, Lon and Keith get along very, very well, and they've done some great things together. The remodeling of the facility was done with input from both people, which has given us some time, has given us another seven to 10 years. I think one of the things that we'll be looking at in the next seven to 10 years, is it a satellite system that we want to go to, or not a satellite system that we need to go to? And I think those discussion items need to take place, and still yet to be determined.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey, we'll begin the next question with you. Flooding remains a problem for the city. Of all the steps the city has taken to prepare for flooding over the years, and keeping in mind last month's storms, what has worked well? What needs to be improved? Mr. Rainey?
What's worked well? Very, very fortunate, very proud that we got the southeast Oatana flood mitigation taken care of before that flood, 18th Street, that area. What needs to be worked on, obviously downtown. We've got issues in the library area that we, we need to address. We've got an area just north of 18th Street on the south end of town. Mr. Okaberg and myself were out till about 2:00 in the morning on the last flood, working with some of the homeowners in that area. The other area would be Cherry, Cherry Street, that whole area. One of the issues I feel is that we need to work with the county in regards to the water coming into the city. If we can stop that flow or slow that flow down, that will greatly decrease the amount of flooding that occurs in that area.
Thank you. Mr. Boss?
Well, certainly no expert in the field of flooding here, but a couple of observations. I'm a member of Cornerstone Church out on 18th and Austin, not Austin Road, but, yeah, makes me wrong. Well, when we have those big rains, the water coming in from out in the country is like a raging river headed straight to Brooktree. Now, I understand that water runs downhill, not uphill, so I don't know if you can do anything about that, but, you know, that, that's always kind of intrigued me, why the farmers' fields are draining into the city. I guess my only other comment is I believe the city employs a stormwater expert that should be able to answer a lot of these questions and help fix it.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
In 2007, when we had the major flood in southeast part of Oatana, we looked at the different important items that needed to be addressed, and we came up with 10 of them. At this point, one is left, that is around the library area. We've been able to fix all the other areas of Oatana. Some we need to go back and look at. It's working. One insurance agent told me that in 2007, they had almost 400 claims in the southeast part of Oatana. This year, they had less than 50, and they're all local. They were not part of what the, the city had fixed that caused their problems. We're going to continue. We've got more that we need to do, and there's more that we, we'll find as we get through things. The less expensive ones now are coming up, and we need to address those, and that's what the plan is. We've already discussed it. We have a town hall meeting with the citizens to talk...
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Mr. Coates?
As was said, back in 2007, I think we had over 450 claims against us in 2010. We were under 200. This year, we were under 100. So I think that speaks just loads to what city staff and what we've done already to try and eliminate some of those problems. We don't have them all fixed yet, and we're not going to be able to all fix them all. I think the city has done a good job of buying some of the homes that were in the flood claim. Those that wanted to sell, we purchased those, and eliminated those processes going forward. But when you have your house flooded, it's a major disaster for you, and we feel for you. We'll try and fix all those that we can, but we're not going to be able to fix everything.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
The importance of flood mitigation and the activities that have taken place in the past have resulted in positive improvements over time, but I think that it's going to continue to be a problem and continue to be something that we need to keep at the forefront of our planning. It's nice to hear that there's only one major of the 10 that were set out years ago, but I don't anticipate that the issue of flooding is going to subside. I think that there's going to be continued challenges that we face through just natural occurrences that, that we need to be able to plan for and continue to take a proactive look. I don't think that it's something that, once we cross the 10th one off the list, that we can sit back and, and look back on it and continue to identify the next nine projects and continue to keep up with some of those areas.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Just to add on to what Mr. Abraham and Mr. Coates said, a lot of those major projects are done, all but one, and they, they worked, and that was a positive thing. The last one is down by the library in the post office area. They have a plan in place to correct that one. There are some localized areas now. There's the Cardinal Drive area and Smith Avenue just off 18th Street, which we're going to tackle. Last night, I met with the city engineer. We had a two-hour meeting to identify the other small areas that we're going to tackle, and it's a priority for them. The other thing we have to deal with is we have to talk with the county and the watershed area people, because there's a lot of water coming into town that we have no control over. We have to work together to find a way to at least slow it down, and that would help immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham, we will begin the next question with you. City code and permit regulations are often cited as issues in Oatana. What can be done to streamline or make it easier to do business in Oatana? What would you change, and who would be affected by that change? Specifically, what should the city inspection department do to address concerns about responsiveness to contractors and business owners? Mr. Abraham?
Thank you. We have been looking at that. We've, we've streamlined the department quite extensively already, and things have really improved over the last three years. I'm sure that there's always going to be somebody that's disgruntled in what happens. To be honest with you, I talked to somebody from one of the neighboring communities that said the same thing about their city. We follow the uniform building code that is published and accepted by the state of Minnesota, and we do follow it as best we can. And with that being said, I think that's it.
All right. Mr. Boss?
Well, in my business, I do a lot of interior sign work and different jobs for contractors around town, so I've heard lots of stories through the years, some of them quite interesting. I think the big thing that I would, you know, want to stress on that is this is customer service. This is not, yes, there's codes, they got to be enforced, and I understand that, but you can do it in such a way that you're a partner with that person, helping them feel good about doing it properly, and knowing that you'll end up with a better product when it's all done. So, hey, customer service, partnering up, and having a good relationship with people is important.
Thank you. Mr. Coates?
Being mayor for 11 years, I know 11 years ago, that question would add some merit to it. Today, I feel that that question has continued to repeat itself without a lot of merit to it. If you look at what we've done in the building inspection department over the last five, six years, we've had a consultant contact all the builders that are in Oatana. We've had meetings with those builders in Oatana. We've improved communication with those builders in Oatana. And if a building person has a problem, if they come and talk to the building inspection department before they get going into the project, all of... department before they get going into the project, all those issues get resolved. So I think we've made great strides going forward and we will continue to make great strides. I think we've got an excellent building inspection department. We had a symposium here the other day and it was communities from Wasika, Faribault, Oatana, the cities, and they said, "How do you guys get everything done in Oatana? We can't get that all done." So we've made great improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schultz.
Well, this is a subject I'm very passionate about as a builder in Oatana. I want to add on to what the mayor said. I agree with him 100%. I think this is an old problem. It doesn't exist today. Communication has improved dramatically and things are going well. What I want to say right now, this is how passionate I am about it, if you hear of anybody, a contractor or owner that has an issue with the building inspection department, I want them to call me. I will visit with them directly and talk to them, find out what the issue is, because I've done this a couple of times and come to find out, the issue isn't with their building inspection department, there are other concerns. And sometimes you just get dumped on the building inspection department because it's a kind of an easy scapegoat to say, "Well, the building inspection department said I can't do it." So I pledged to you, I will follow up on every one of those issues that comes up.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
When I had my house built, we did actually have a firm from outside the community build it, so I apologize for that, but at the time, there was some peer pressure that I was giving from somebody in the back of the room for a specific style. Sorry to throw you under the bus, honey. I love our house now, but the feedback that I did receive was that, and this was four years ago, that we did have a very difficult group to work with. Now, I'm not saying that to throw the group under the bus. I think that it's all about communication and I'm going to support what Doug said about treating everyone as a customer and understanding what each individual's intent is. I, as the homeowner, want my houses to be built with the strictest of codes. As the contractors doing the work, they want everything to be built with the highest of standards and the community wants to make sure that those are being followed as well. So it's about understanding what we're communicating and making sure that all parties understand. So I support strict codes. I encourage the communication as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey.
Yes, while you may hear stories, just because you hear a story doesn't make it fact-based. If it's fact-based, then contact, like Mr. Schultz said, contact a city council member. We are more than willing to come out and visit with you. We will go with you to the building inspectors themselves and try to remedy the situation. I know last winter and spring, many contractors within the city of Oatana met with the building inspection team along with our city administration to go over concerns, what was working, what wasn't working, and how to get better. I think those meetings were very fruitful. The outcome was very good and we continue to improve at what we do. However, code is still code and there are reasons why there are codes, there are state codes, and our inspectors are hired to make sure that those codes are followed. Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to our final question of the day and I do apologize for those in the audience whose questions I did not get to. Mr. Mayor, we will start with you. Oatana is becoming an increasingly diverse community. What is Oatana City Council's role as it relates to that, this change in Oatana? Mr. Coons.
I think we need to embrace that diversity. One of the things that we look forward to is our workforce and our workforce will not continue to be filled unless we do it with diversity. I just had a program up in the cities that said today, 1 in 5 Americans are Hispanic. In 2050, 1 in 3 Americans are going to be Hispanic. So we need to recognize and make sure that we facilitate the needs of all the diverse members of our society, whether it be Somali, Hispanic, Sioux needs or whatever. We need to help them through the school system and we need to help them through the workforce system.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Opening your community is one of my core tenets and then that speaks specifically to diversity and understanding and respecting those boundaries, both being willing to reach out, create the opportunities for inclusiveness, but also sharing and respecting individuals' privacy and that not everyone is necessarily wanting or needing to be excessively engaged. Going around the community, as I have been for the past few months, kind of campaigning and going around and visiting neighbors, I've been definitely encouraged by the diversity that I've seen, but also really the shared interest that they're all communicating about responsiveness and, you know, sharing what our opinions are and recognizing some of the decisions that we do make, sharing the reasons why. I believe it was said earlier that we're not going to make everybody happy, but the understanding is for those that we are making happy to at least best explain why. And sharing the why supports not only our decisions, but also why we act in the ways that we do for our cultural.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Schultz.
I have employed many Hispanics over the years and by talking with them, all they really want is a nice, clean, safe place to raise their families. And I think it is incumbent on us as a council to provide that safe, clean place. We need to have a fair and equal place for everybody to live and work at, treat everybody fairly and bring everybody, bring people to the table and when they have issues, discuss them, see how we can do it to work them out. And just remember, we have to all live together, so that's what we have to do.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey.
Yeah, one of the things that I was fortunate to be able to do in the last four years was I attended the Land and Leadership in ethnically diverse communities that was held here in Oatana. That was very, very interesting, to say the least. I think that we as a city, with our Human Rights Commission, they do a really good job of trying to make sure that the needs of our diverse community are met. Like Mr. Schultz said, I think that all of our, all of our people, they want a safe environment to raise their kids and to grow up in within the city of Oatana. It's an ongoing process. I continue to hear, unfortunately, negative connotations directed towards some of our, some of our neighbors and hopefully we can continue to change that, the feeling within some members of our community.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boss. Sorry about that.
No, you're not.
Well, I think the fact that we're becoming more diverse is just a fact. It's happening all across America. That's life as we know it now and so we might as well make the best. I mean, I've been fortunate to have numerous ethnicities in my store and purchasing products from me and it's always been a pleasant experience. They've treated me well, I've treated them well and so, otherwise what Mr. Schultz said is also excellent, so thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham.
To repeat what's been said here, I agree with every bit of it. The one thing that I find is that to give their respect, you have to treat them with respect. And I don't think that we can do it any better than what we've been trying to do now, but we have to keep working at it.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, we will begin with you for our closing statements and remember, you have two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Okay. Well, this is, thank you, everyone, for coming today. Thank you to the friends and the radio station and the chamber. It's fun to get together and do this. I wish we could do more of this. I guess I really want to ask you for your vote on November 8th. I get asked a lot, why in the world I wanted to do this job? It doesn't pay very well. It wakes you up at night and you have to think about it and you get lots of calls and that's great. I love talking to people. I, people that know me, I have regular business hours. I'm sitting at Costa's counter at 7:30 in the morning, six days a week. You can come down and visit me and talk to me about what you want to talk to me about and lots of people do and I enjoy every minute of it. I think what I really want to say, I've been thinking about this for a while, why I want to be on the city council is, I'm very, very passionate about the city of Oatana. I'm not talking about rah-rah passionate. I'm talking about deep-seated, committed passion to Oatana. Like I said, my family's been here for generations and I expect them to be here for generations more. And I really, really look at the long term. Our forefathers did a lot of things for us so that we can live in the community we live in now. And I think it's very important that we think about that so that when our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren are living in Oatana, it's the same great place it is now or even better. Thank you and I look for your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
First, I want to thank again the Oatana Chamber of Commerce, People's Press and Rotary members for attending this event today, as well as Limburg Productions for producing it. Mr. Schultz, I want to thank you for your service to the community over the past five years. I messaged Mr. Schultz soon after placing my name up for nomination or for election and I reached out to him a little know that I'm not running against him. I'm simply running for this community. I'm looking to be an independent, impartial, accountable advocate for our community, seeking to really drive on those primary tenets in my campaign, which is about openness, community, a heart of the city, sharing our talents. So many of the different things that we talked about today, I agree, if we had had, you know, more time, we could really kind of dive in a little bit deeper and I welcome any communication or interest that you guys do have to reach out to me so that we can have further discussions about this. I've pledged to Mr. Schultz that if he wins the election, that I will still be an advocate and support and a voice to him and the community and ask for the same in return. It's about doing it together. It's about sharing the gifts and strengths that we have. Independently, none of us are capable of doing it on our own, but collectively, within our community, we're going to be stronger. I do ask for your vote for November 8th. I look forward to, again, going around and continuing to meet different members of the community and again, thank you all for your attendance today.
Thank you. Mr. Rainey.
I'm going to, I'm going to talk a little bit different. I want to talk about what I'm proud of the first four years. The first thing is, if I did nothing else, along with Councilmember Abraham, we had a drug house in southeast Oatana. We got many calls from the neighbors. Mr. Abraham and myself had multiple neighborhood meetings in which we talked about the problem with the neighbors. We invited Steel County Attorney Dan McIntosh to come to one of these meetings. We had drug force, task force members come to the meeting and while it took a long time and they told us they were working on it, but it would take some time, they finally were able to eliminate the people in that drug house. The neighbors have their neighborhood back and I am extremely proud to have been a part of that, to get that done. It wasn't easy, but the neighbors, they get to enjoy life again and that was great. Another thing was when Northland Industries, when they added on, they had some challenges and the challenges were with the building inspection. They didn't understand all of it. And so along with City Administrator Boosie, we met with the owners, we went through everything. As much as they were disgruntled through the first process and didn't really understand it, they just finished up their second addition with virtually no problems at all. I really enjoyed working with that as well. Last thing is just having people contact me. When people call me with a question or concern, I try to go to their house or their place of business to talk to them and try to work through the problem. Once they tell me what the issue is, I meet with city staff, we discuss what we can do and most, more often than not, the outcome is a positive outcome and I really enjoy those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham.
Thank you and thank you for the Oatana People's Press and Rotary and the Chamber for putting this on. I've been up here a number of times asking for your vote and asking for it again. There's a lot of things that I've done for the city, there's a lot of things I want to do for the city yet. One of the top things that Kevin mentioned was the drug house. That was just one. There's other ones. We get calls constantly on different issues that we have to deal with. A lot of times it's with neighbors. Our job is to make sure that it gets settled and satisfactory to both parties when we do this. Again, just to ask for your commitment to support me and I will continue to do the best job I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boss.
Well, I also would like to thank everybody for being here today. Very, very interesting article in the Star Tribune yesterday. I don't know if anybody would have read it, but in Minnesota this year, 2/3 of the local elections have no challengers. 10% of local elections have nobody signed up at all. So the idea of public service is kind of losing its steam here and so, in my opinion, if there's only one person running, it's really not an election. So if nothing else, I've provided lesser somebody to go against here. I guess what I would say in regards to why would you vote for me is simply the word change. You know, lots of organizations get, you know, they get a little comfortable, get a little stale and having a new voice, a new opinion and, you know, 28 years in small business and all the things I've seen in this town since I've grown up have given me a decent background to step in. I certainly don't have all the knowledge that I would need at this point, but obviously over time you gain that. I would like to say, you know, Les is obviously an honorable, great man and he was a good friend of my father and he's done a super job, so vote for me though, thanks.
Mr. Coons, we're going to give you the last word.
Well, Doug, I don't know if I can, you know, this is not an election, I guess, because I'm running unopposed. Running unopposed has some great merits to it, you know, I don't have to worry about the competition out there and everything, but the other side of that is I still love Oatana and am committed to Oatana. You know, I don't think people realize the amount of time that it takes to become a mayor or a city council member. Being retired helps facilitate that time. You know, some people ask, "How much time do you put into it?" Well, we could put in 20 hours a week or 30 hours a week, as much as you want to do it. And being a mayor and being a mayor for 11 years, the thing that really has benefits to it is the connections you make throughout the state and throughout the nation as you're going forward. If I have a new business coming to Oatana that's coming from another state, I can call Governor Dayton and have him call that business and encourage them to come to Oatana. Those connections just bring great value, great value to our community. So I thank you for allowing me to be mayor for 11 years and I thank you for the opportunity to run unopposed and be mayor for the next four. Let us give a round of applause to all of our guests.